November thirteenth. How come that says on the minutes? Anyways, November thirteenth, it's twelve forty-three. This is our work session, the Weaver County Board of Commissioners. We're going to start today's meeting with looking for approval of the minutes of the commission meeting held on November sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
And we have a second. All those payers say aye. Aye, motion carries. We're now approved. Let's go to our twelve thirty discussion regarding cleaning the Weaver River. Chad Meyer Hopper is not with us. Gary Myers, Ashley Tolman, Sean Williams.
So Chad actually had something come up and wasn't able to be here at the last minute. He asked me to kind of help him, help him run this meeting. So Commissioners, in case you weren't aware, we had a, we had a big spring, this spring, this last spring. And we had a lot of water move through the Weaver River channel. So we have, this summer, we took an inventory of it. We had, what did we figure, forty-four spots that we had locations identified in GPS and we have a
Forty-five, did you say?
Forty-four.
Forty-four, okay.
Along the Weaver River. We have a permit in with the Army Corps of Engineers right now, permit request in, and it's not been fully approved, but I think we've got them all the information they needed and hoping they get that final approval this week.
I want to pause you right there.
Sure.
I need to get that. There we go.
There we go.
Can you hear us now, Brett? Coming through?
Yep, we're good. Thanks, guys.
Thanks. Okay, keep going. So anyway, the request we're here to make for, from you guys today is we have flood control money, countywide flood money. We'd like to use that to hire some extra staff to augment, oversee, overseen from the road department, kind of like we did four or five years ago, where we had a river crew to go in there and clean some of that out. With that many locations and the potential for snow to start falling here in the near future, Joe's guys obviously are going to be tied up with pushing snow, moving salt, moving sand, addressing that. They just did not have the time to get to it this year like we thought we would. And so we just, we're nervous about time. We're nervous about capacity in the channel. And we're thinking probably the best way to address that is with some extra staff augmentation through a river crew. Now, this would not be a permanent type augmentation. It'd be temporary as needed.
So are we talking about making them part-time seasonal?
It would be.
Are we going to, are we going to bid it out to private contractors?
Well, we could, we could take any of those approaches. Our thought was seasonal and bring a few guys on that know how to operate equipment and who we would trust to go out and do the work that we need done.
So a lot of it is backhoe?
Yep. Well, yeah, there might be, yeah, long stick, might be some chainsaw work, cutting some of the stuff up into manageable pieces. You know, we're going to need someone to man some of the burn piles, that kind of stuff. Material, most of the material we pull out, the intention is to work with the landowners adjacent to the, to the channel.
Burn it?
To, well, the material, the dirt, the gravel, the rocks would be set there on site.
Right.
And then, and then whatever we can take out, haul off, which would be fairly minimal tree-wise, would, would burn. So. But Joe's just.
So what is your timeframe? Well, you want to start that ASAP?
As soon as I get the final approval on this permit from the Corps, they'll give us an extension on that for about two years.
Okay.
Is what the permit life is like. And so we'd like to get going on it as soon as we can, once it's available. I'm hoping to have approval from them. I, I hate to be overly optimistic, but if I, if they can have some time to review these pictures we got taken last week, hopefully in the next week or two, I could get approval from the Army Corps. And then, then at that point, in the meantime, we'd like to start getting some advertisements out for positions. Whatever you determine is the appropriate number of positions to approve. We're thinking, what did we figure, three or four guys at least? And I, I don't remember how many the, the previous river crew consisted of. Was it as many as five?
Five or six, but I don't know that we need that many.
Yeah, it's probably not as big of a scale of a project.
And it would be hitting it hard from now until January, February timeframe.
That's how I see it. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Get it before that water starts coming down.
That's right. That's right, Commissioner. Okay, so. But obviously, we don't have the
Flood, flood control money.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Bowles, questions?
No.
Concerns? Yeah, I, to me, it's a good use. I mean, that's what the money was for.
Correct.
That's right. For exactly that purpose. So I, yeah, and I don't, but we don't want to make them permanent. I think we'd say
Yeah.
And I think, look, between now and, you're right. You get into, you know, end of February, March, depending on how the spring goes.
Correct.
They're probably going to be done.
Right, that's right.
The river will tell us when it's done.
Yes, and it's going to require some coordination with, with a couple of different areas. Probably some of my guys might need to help with getting access, granted permission, you know, there's
Now, is this, so I know it's going to come up. Is this all on the Weaver? Because we've got some people on the Upper South Fork that, as you well know, have also expressed some concerns.
We're going to start on the Weaver and then we'll see where we get to. And in the meantime, we'll start on a permit for the Upper South Fork.
Okay, so you haven't started the permit there?
No, we've not.
Okay.
Focus just on the Weaver right now for now, so.
All right, but your plan is to put one in place?
Yep.
So we can tell people?
Yep.
We're after. Yeah, okay. Commissioner Harvey?
So I love the fact that we have money going into that stormwater budget every year.
Yeah.
Which could be argued that it could be ongoing funds because of that. But as I remember, this was designed, as was talked about by Commissioner Bowles, for efforts towards flood mitigation. You answered my question with regards to seasonal. Part-time temporary help with seasonal. Do we have the equipment already? Because part of this was also to have equipment.
Yep.
To be able to do it, to be able to replace existing equipment, some of which, when you came in and argued, one grossly needs to be replaced. Right away, we have two long stick, one needs to be replaced.
That's right.
Yes, so we, we will have the equipment. What we would do is put this crew on the river with the equipment they need specifically for the river. The other guys would be plowing snow or doing other things that does not require that same equipment.
The, the guys that would, have, have been out there. And so I like the idea that you're on it now. It'll be freezing soon, so that'll be the time to get on it like we normally are. I, I, I don't really, I don't see, as long as these seasonal guys know that that's what it is. It's, it's a seasonal
Yep, absolutely.
Position.
It will be seasonal and we will have someone out there supervising, making sure our equipment is being taken care of.
I think
Yes.
Timing it for seasonal is six months?
Yeah, I think you're right. And if this would fall well within a six month
By the time these guys get started working, it'll be
It'll be under
It'll be December.
Right.
And then we're till the end of May. That's just right.
Yep, yeah.
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 What about like on North Fork, where they have the deep creek HOA that's put in a permit to have work done? Is that something we'd look at tackling?
We certainly could. What Ashley's referring to is we these events are not yearly. So when we have them, it's ten, fifteen or more years when these events happen. And so you get a lot of movement of trees and debris that collects over that time period. Ashley mentioned a spot that was brought to our attention kind of, kind of over there by the, the preserve, the Wolf Creek Preserve off of forty-one hundred north, just north of that a little ways. It was a buildup of material that caused the water to meander and move more onto private property, I guess is the best way of describing it. And some erosion took place. Our intention is is to, again, we need to get a permit in place first up. Well, actually, they got one. We could probably operate underneath. But not so much to reconstruct the channel as much as it is more to remove that material that caused the migration in the first place. There was a, there was a massive buildup of
Yeah, and they, they had a buffer in their HOA, open space area around the homes, and that got, a lot of that got eaten up when the river started meandering over. And so they'd like to, you know, they put in a permit, they submitted to the state to get that kind of corrected back to how it was.
Right.
So they've been asking if that's work we'd be willing to do.
So they requested that we do the work or?
At their expense or at our expense? And, and our expense.
Yeah, that's I, I struggle with that.
Statute on that? Because if we're not obligated to then the, would, the river's part of the state. You know, so
Yeah, I, and we've taken the stance, at least I think on a couple, three occasions, that, look, it's up to you to take that out. The county's not going to come in and do it. In fact,
We did that on the North Fork with that guy up there.
On this, every, all, all my neighbors.
The South Fork.
To the South Fork. I'll, I'll show you four piles of
Debris.
Debris that would fill this room like ten times. So, and they've, so they've hired contractors to come in and do it. And so I don't, I'm not comfortable now going back and saying, we're going to do that for, where we told Stan, not Stan Booth.
Greg Bernish?
Greg, no.
Greg, Greg Booth.
Greg Booth. That we weren't going to do his, yeah. So I, yeah.
Okay.
I don't, I, I just think we've got to be real careful going down that road.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, we support them and if, if we've got some extra material or something like that, that, that we can, might help them out on the future, but yeah.
So it'd be more just the Weaver River?
I
Have a river crew and
Yeah, I, I think we're pretty much dedicated to Weaver.
Yeah.
Even though I still question, is that, you know? But I think if you look at it from a flood standpoint, we could justify it because spending that dollars in flood control will mitigate us not only private property, but public property in the future. So I don't know. It's a tough one. But I, I just assume stay out of the Upper Valley. Once we open that can of worms, boy. We get some people and dive in.
Okay. All right.
So I feel bad for those people, but it's just
Yeah.
That's just part of the nature of living on the you know?
Yeah. And if there's some state funds that come about or federal funds that we can say, look, now we can come in and do it, great.
So how many positions would you like us to put out there?
I think you're looking at a crew. I think you're looking at at least four, up to six.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk to Joe.
Let Joe know. I mean, let, you, you guys, Joe could determine that.
Okay, we'll, we'll come back to you with a number that we think this will cost before we do anything.
Okay, so get, get a number, look at what you think we're going to have to pay. I imagine you're going to be looking you know, twenty bucks plus.
Right.
Depending on expertise.
Right, because yeah, we want someone that is, that we can feel comfortable with operating the equipment.
Right.
Even down to, you know, our chainsaws out there, right? You know, we've
Yeah.
Got good money tied up and invested in that equipment. So all right, we'll come up with
Come up with a number for us.
We'll get back with you on that. So
There was something that Ben Madolsky sent through. Did you see an email from him this morning?
Or a text? About the work they did out at South North Bay?
This was some federal funding.
Oh, oh, really?
But I, I'm trying to find it here and I, I'm still not finding it.
Okay. That'd be interesting to see. If I get it up, if I find it, why I'll, I'll send it on to you. Yeah, please. That'd be great. We're happy to look into anything we can to help anybody out.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, what else, gentlemen?
Two other things. Just as an update for you, we're, we're hoping by the end of this week to have the box culverts advertised on our system for four thousand north. That's the crossing out west of Smith and Edwards. Which, if I'm being honest with you, which I am, we're, we're probably, we'll run that for two weeks on SciQuest to get, to get a bid from a, from a contractor to place those. In the meantime, we'll get, we'll start working on getting them fabricated. But we're kind of going to be up to the mercy of the fabricator as to how quickly they can turn those around and get them over to us. So we might be looking as much as two months down the road on the materials of the fabrication of those box culverts. It's kind of a specialty item. There's a lot of work happening right now, chewing up a lot of pre-fabrication on box culverts right now throughout the state. Unbeknownst to us, we didn't realize that. So we're, we're on it. We're working on it as quick as we can. I can't guarantee you how quickly we'll get those box culverts committed to us from, from the suppliers.
But that's all we're waiting on, that we can get the work done.
Yes, sir. That was correct. That's correct. Then the other thing was the
The, the bridge agreement.
Oh.
Be on next week.
Yes. Commissioners, earlier, how was it, last year?
It was in March.
It was March of this year. We, we received word from Federal High, well, UDOT in place of Federal Highways. We got some money approved for some bridge replacements. Turns out there's three of them we'll be doing. Two of them we already knew about. The third one was the extra one. The first two is, first one is fifty-nine hundred west, out west, north of Wade's Dairy, north of Twelfth Street. The second one is the forty-one hundred north culvert over the North Fork of Ogden up there in, in the valley. And then the third one was seventy-nine hundred east, south of the fire station. Over the South Fork.
Yep.
The first two required a six point seven seven percent match. And Commissioner Far, I forwarded to you where we're under your purview, the federal aid agreements, which you signed, but looking through it, talking with our comptroller, I probably should have done that through an official commission meeting ratification. So you'll be seeing that next Tuesday.
Don't be broncoing us on those now.
Well, to be fair, that was, that was, that was my fault, Commissioner Harvey.
Good, nice.
It's a great, it's a great deal on these bridges. Three plus million dollars, but we're paying a total of about two hundred and sixty.
Yeah, I thought you might like that one.
Huge benefit. Well, I, it's not that I don't like or dislike the projects. I just would like to know about them and, and, and not find out about them a year after you've gone.
Well, the ice, they're, they're not, they're going to be not even started in two years.
Yeah, the federal government, yeah, exactly.
The icing on this cake is the two we had a match on, the third one is at, is a zero percent.
Oh, great.
So we're actually getting a free bridge out of that one. So
Listen, there's one more free bridge we need, and that's out west. We need a free bridge out west over that little way, way out there.
We'll go to work on it for, for you. But yeah, you'll be seeing that on commission meeting next Tuesday.
So you will go to work on that one out west.
We will make some requests.
Which bridge are you talking about?
Anything that can get up that, so we can help that planning commission get the piece of property across.
There's a discussion on next Monday's work session about that.
About federal funding.
Not, not federal funding, but about the bridge.
About the bridge.
Okay, all right, what else, Gary?
That, that's it. Just wanted to brief you on those two things and
Very aware of them.
That they're coming. So
Okay. Questions might have for us? Questions for Gary? Guess you're good.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Commissioners, thanks for your time.
Really.
Always good to see you.
We appreciate it.
All right, it looks like we've got Stephanie. Sean, you're involved with this one?
Yes.
Okay.
And Todd should be out there and, and Quinny.
Where's Quinny?
He should be. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. So we've got a couple of BS on vets that felt bad. No, well, the one, one of these guys called and said he knew about it, but he had a conflict. He couldn't come. They wondered if he could, so I don't know.
Just going to present them with what we gave the others.
Yeah. I better check with Christian, make sure.
You know what I found on that is most of these guys have kept their names off these lips on purpose because of how bad they were treated.
No, that's true. No, it's
Sorry, it's adding a little excitement out there.
You were adding a little?
Getting the guys wound up for the presentation. How are you guys?
Good.
Yes, sir.
Yourself over here.
What do you want us to say? I'm good, you?
All right, here we go. If we should choose to monetize the permit, right, and we'll play off that and say, I
I said, here, Sean.
You know, please see exhibit.
Thanks for looking at that sign so, so fast.
Yes, no problem.
I just didn't want us to get the snow up there and then we were in trouble.
Yeah, have that be an issue. We don't need that.
But I talked to Joe about eventually leaving a couple of them.
Okay.
Putting in permanent those for their off the red so we can cloud.
Okay, good.
So, so I gave him some options, whatever he chooses.
Okay. That's great.
I saw your
All right, welcome, everyone. We're here at one o'clock, almost exactly on time. Regarding Q Energy methane harvesting expansion, Stephanie's with us. Sean, Todd's here and there's Brandon at the end of the table. And we've got our folks here from Q Energy. So go ahead and tell us who you are.
Okay, so
I know who you are, but
Yeah, Q Energy, that's always good to do that again. So Q Energy's been doing a project, we've got it at the landfill. Todd's been super gracious to give us a little small section of the parking lot where we're converting landfill gas into electricity using one of our generators. That's what we specialize in. We're Ogden Company, based right off on Twelfth Street. And what we specialize in is converting low-grade methane, methane that can typically not be used in any other process. And we convert it into electricity. Project's been really successful so far. I don't think it's been anything but humming. So it hums twenty-four seven. And we're looking for ways to provide additional revenue stream for the county through expanding the project. And that's what we'd like to present today.
Great. Okay.
Okay. So
Give us your name.
So, oh, thank, yes, introduction. My name is Isaac. I'm the chief technology for Q Energy. I'm calling. Would you introduce yourself?
I'm Spencer. I'm the product engineer for this and the product manager. So I wear both hats.
Great, okay.
Troy McKinley, I'm with Verak Carbon. We do the carbon credit piece.
You were out there at our river cutting.
Correct.
Yep. Okay. So that's a picture of the unit that's taken right of archery. Basically, we can go down, clear down. If you remember, up until not too long, you know, what, a decade ago, you had a a large power transformation project there in the parking lot, looked like a diesel engine, as was mentioned. Once methane le, le, um, methane levels drop below about fifty percent, most power production units can't really handle that low-grade methane, becomes a maintenance and a a service liability. And so the decision, given that the county is not required anymore to do anything with that landfill. If you can close it, close and forget. You're past your thirty years, the decision by the county was that we're shutting down the power production and it turned into a parking lot. We came along, given that this generator can go clear down to thirty percent, we have a horizon in front of us of probably between ten to twenty years of additional energy manufacturing that normal technologies could not take advantage of. Okay, so even though the landfill's been out there for thirty years, we still have a good, at least ten, if not twenty more years of good methane, as far as we're concerned, good. It's not good for anybody else, but we can do something with it.
Yeah.
Like to also mention that we were providing that. Thank you, Stephanie. She was very influential in getting some funding from the state that helped us offset some of the costs of getting this generator put in place, reducing emissions for the county, and it's been a fantastic joint project. So go to the next slide.
Really has.
So here's just a top-level view of the landfill. Archery is up in the top left-hand corner. You can see that little box up there. We're just above the arrow where it says power plant. That's where the power plant used to be. That's the parking lot. The green arrow is showing where we are presently. Connected to the main horizontal line that feeds gas. So if we just hit enter one more time, you can see that right now we have three wells that are open and we're only really feeding off one or two of those wells. Those three wells have more than enough capacity to keep one generator on. We could probably run even more than one generator. The problem is is you have a huge asset there with thirty-three wells and we're only taking advantage of a fraction. So right now, our estimates is we're roughly consuming about two percent of your methane liability or methane resource. We would like to take advantage of everything. Troy from Verak Carbon is partnering with us because he believes we can turn those additional thirty green dots into revenue for the county. Because you are past the thirty-year window, no one requires you to do anything. You can let that methane vent into the environment. If you choose to do something, there are financial tools available to you that you can be paid for doing something. We understand the risk involved. What we're proposing is that Q Energy would assume all the hardware risk. We would install the hardware and Spencer can quickly go through what that means. Q Energy would own the operation, the service and everything else of all the hardware on the site. Verak Carbon would own the whole portion of transforming that into revenue and that you guys would be beneficiaries of some portion of that revenue stream so that we could convert what now is being used at the two percent level to consume a hundred percent of it and turn it into you know, advantage for you.
Got it.
Okay.
So the proposal that we have is right now we have a power gen sitting on a pad. We want to take that power gen, put it on a skin. The energy that power gen is producing right now is being wasted in heat energy.
Yeah.
It's running full throttle and it's just heating up the air. And so we want to use that and run a five horsepower blower to actively pull all the methane out at this, at approximately the same rate that the landfill is producing it. Feed it to an enclosed ground flare, which is fire-approved. We're already in the city and with the state on, you know, air pollution certifications, which is ironic because we're actually cleaning. But we need to get certifications, which we're already in the works. And with that, we can burn the balance. You know, the, the power gen will burn a fraction which will still be counted towards our carbon credit generation. And then the flare burns the balance. It's enclosed, it's safe. You don't see a flame. You don't see anything. It's just a little unit that burns your methane.
So the machine still operates at the same rate with that?
Yeah, correct. Everything still works, but then we'll be consuming roughly on order of, let's say, twelve hundred to fourteen hundred tons of methane per year, which is equivalent to north of thirty thousand tons of CO2 equivalent. So on the open market, maybe if we just stop for a second, if you want to just share where you are at with Verak Carbon and the American Carbon Registry.
Sure. So actually, we're excited at Verak Carbon. We just had our, our software that we use to do this, to track all this was just, we got our patent filings last week. So that was great, making us unique to the, to field as opposed to anybody else that can do this. The great thing about it is, is we track minute by minute, or every fifteen-minute intervals, we'll track exactly what's being destructed. And we've already had preliminary talks with ACR and had verbal approval on this. American ACR is American Carbon Registry. And that's the group that we would register the project with. And they would actually function as the issuing carbon credit entity. And then we would market those on behalf of the county to a lot of the different people that we work with in the carbon issue market. So I think we're thinking right now for these type of credits based on methane, I mean, anywhere from ten to fifteen dollars is what we think we can get on the open market. There are higher-grade credit when you look at forestry, forestry's down to two to three-dollar credit. But since these are methane, they're a little bit higher values. And we're thinking probably that ten to twelve dollar range is a pretty good accurate estimate.
Yeah, is that because methane produces a little higher calorie?
Yeah, so methane actually, when you look at it, it's, it can't, it's not linear to CO2, but if you look at like EPA in the first, I don't know, five years or something, it's eighty, eighty-four times more harmful than CO2.
Yeah.
But over time, the way the ACR registers it with a bio methane is it's twenty-eight times. And so we would actually get a twenty-eight to one ratio subtracted from the flare, the flaring device as well.
And the flare will consume more. There's a one-to-one burn ratio from a chemical standpoint. So a one ton of methane burned is one ton of carbon produced. And so that's, that's where we have to subtract one.
So you can get about a twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven credits per tonne as opposed to one.
And then you multiply that by a thousand four hundred, which is where you're getting the thirty-five tonnes of CO2 equivalent.
Yeah.
So it's not monetized daily. It's monetized on a six-months or one-year window. So we install the unit, we let it run for six months. The registry creates the carbon credit. We then can market it through can market it through these channels and then there's revenue that then can be easily shared. So if you want to go to.
Essentially, ACR will give you a ten. Once we register the project, you have a ten-year guarantee on that project. So you have, for ten years, you can monetize those credits. Then after ten years, we can go back and renew the project for another ten years.
Hmm, okay. So the, the, just to mention in terms of the cement pad, the idea, you can go one, just so we can see the size. The go one slide back. Beautiful, was maybe to leave the cement pad and just maybe make one more pad and not put a skid in for, we, the product has a skid. It might be easier for Utah just to leave.
Extend it.
Exactly, and that's what I discussed with Mike and.
That's simple. So that only took us like two hours.
But if you wanted, we just run through the dimensions.
Yeah, it's not, it's not large. You're looking at, you know, eight and a half feet tall. Um the flare is not big. We have to get it custom-made for application. Um but the manufacturers are Utah-based, so that's, that's a bonus. Um it's as you see the dimensions up there, you're not, you're not taking up less.
It's fully enclosed. When we say it's an internal, it's an internal conversion device, so.
You're not going to see the big flame.
No, 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 no.
Going down through uh West Salt Lake.
No, no, it's just a, it's a, it'll be warm. If you walk by it and you touch it, it'll be warm, but you're converting it all internally to that device. And it is, as, it is funny that you pull an air permit for it, but we are twenty-seven times friendlier to the environment by doing it this way than just let it, what's happening now, which is all that methane is just seeping out.
Yeah.
Environment.
So two quick questions for you. First off, maintenance-wise, are they going to require like a six-foot mow around it to be maintained?
Um.
First, I would assume.
And that would go into, and we'll go to the last slide because we're going to talk about um amending, you know, paragraph seventeen. Um Q Energy would assume responsibility over the hardware. Q Energy would assume responsibility over the servicing of the equipment and maintaining the equipment. So you could say, I'm going to put the fence at ten feet, let's say, and Q Energy is responsible for keeping that fence in area clean and de-weeded and, and everything.
So it would be fenced like the other ones fenced now.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it'd be a larger fence.
I understand.
The second question I have is, so your, this model is relying solely on credits generating revenue versus sending power back to the grid theoretically, because that makes us much more mobile than having to run transmission lines, okay?
Correct, absolutely, which the interesting thing about this too on the revenue stream is when you look at all the estimates of carbon credits, right now it's, I think, we ask, we conservatively estimate ten dollars a credit. But if you look at the growth rate over the next ten years, um you can get everywhere from ten dollars all the way up to a hundred and twenty dollars.
Hmm, credit?
Yeah, depending on what you look at. I think credit's least estimates like a hundred and twenty, they're on the high end.
Hmm.
Bloomberg's in the eighty, as it gets closer to the twenty thirty, which twenty thirty is all the sustainability net zero goal, so. Everybody believes they're going to go up, but for now, and I think for the model, we just say this is a conservative estimate that we feel comfortable that you can get over.
Yeah, we took very conservative numbers and the next page I think has a so we can jump to everyone's, look, let's look at the money. We took really conservative, really, really conservative numbers, including the ten dollar and we ran that, um assuming that we would, we would split share, um Veracarbon would take some portion of it, we'd take some portion of it, and then twenty percent of the revenue is what we thought that's typically average. You would have no financial risk. The county would not have any, any financial risk, you'd have no operational risk. And you would have um termination clauses, meaning at any point in time you want to be out. We pull the equipment and we disappear and we return everything to how it was, which was a parking lot. And in return for allowing us at least of the square footage in the parking lot and the gas, then you would um get a portion of the revenue and that would be to, when you say not open books, but it would be to an actual pro forma. Veracarbon is working on a platform which would give you guys access. So at any point in time, you could see how many carbon credits were being created, how much were being sold, at what value they were being sold. So it's all over the ground, right? Whatever we make, we split out between all of us.
So our cut would be twenty percent?
I think that's what the, what Troy was saying is typically the standard for a non-risk owner of landfill gas. Um in return, Q Energy would take all the risk, hardware, service, everything.
Installation.
Everything. You would have zero risk and you would have zero upfront cost. And in return, you would get twenty percent, yeah.
And I guess you could claim the benefits to your voting citizens of, you know, look what we've done to our landfill instead of leaving it like most landfills in the state and let methane emit into the city where people are walking, working, living, you know, breeding methane. We're actually mitigating against that.
That's, that's what I, excites me about this. I mean, the dollars are great, but taking care of that methane. So just one question, then I'll go to Commissioner. So you, you think this is a better use of that rather than turn that into some type of uh transmission? You know, we've talked about at least let, putting electricity over, using that one unit to um supply power to the archery. Archery range out there.
So financially, financially, this makes more sense. I hate to say it.
Okay.
If you're, if you're after revenue, there are, that electricity's still cheap. At some point in time, you may decide that changes. And then we run power over to the plug. But at this point in time, you have industry who are actively looking for forms to offset their CO2 impact. And they're willing to pay you
Yeah.
more for the methane than they are for the electricity.
That we pay for electric, that we would.
Yes.
Okay, well.
Good question.
I had to ask it.
Revenue and risk, I think this is by far the best option available.
Yeah. Commissioner Harvey, you had a question or comment or?
A couple, thank you, Mr. Chair. Todd, what's the, do you have any idea what the annual revenue we've been receiving off of Observatory Park?
Less archery? Less archery is probably about two thousand dollars.
Just Observatory Park only?
Two thousand dollars.
We held a couple of state championship cyclocross races there, but that's been a while.
Well, and we, really where our revenue generating is, we heard for extra parking on big events at Fort. So this wouldn't, you, my question, this leads into my question. This wouldn't interfere with either of those? Um the ability to still host what we host in any way? And my question, you keep referring to the parking lot, but I'm assuming there would be a skid placed at each one of these wellheads?
We would, no, we would just leave.
Oh, just a single?
The one that's.
Just right, that's it. What you see there today would expand by an additional six feet.
Oh.
Towards, towards the, towards the hill.
Yeah, no.
It would be on the other side of that wooden fence.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there would be no other units like you see today. There wouldn't be thirty more of those up on top of there.
No, you would just.
So they're opening valves to suck it down to the one they currently have. That was my question when you referred to the.
I got no more questions. So I thought this was going to be like it, this was going to be like pimples all over that.
No, one.
One big zip.
That's already there.
It's already there.
But we'll have to put another six feet.
You just put that burner in.
So it's a self, the, the biggest issue with closed landfills doing this has been getting power up to the, up to the landfill so as to be able to run these closed fairs. And we've heard, the industry has come to us and said if you could do a self-powered methane conversion unit, self-powered, you don't need to run any lines to us. We are self-powered. We use electricity to run all the controls, all the blowers to suck the well pad. There's a lot of power there. So we're using that power to essentially manage your, your, your mountain.
Well, the.
And we control it.
The beauty of this model is it would not pencil if you had to run transmission lines and purchase this equipment.
No.
We, that twenty-one thousand dollars in the plus would be two hundred in the negative every year.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, this is.
Right, I had no more question.
And the great thing too is you can use it, is there's already counties all across the state that would love to come up here and take a tour of what you guys are doing.
Yeah.
Model for everybody across.
Can we put a toll road uh in?
No, but we can promote it.
We can pay for it. Target for cycles. Toll roads aren't a bad idea.
A little bit of discussion about possibly throwing some solar panels up on that. That would interfere with anything you're doing, is that correct?
You could put solar panels as long as, I think you're still mandated to leave access to the wellheads.
Hundred percent.
Which would be required regardless. So as long as, and we can, we can, and this essentially is the high level, what I was referring to, but we would need access to be able to open and close the wellheads.
That's a, and we would with the structure that's underground, there would be flat pad-style puddings.
Yeah.
Because of the infrastructure underneath it.
Yeah.
So there would be no concern with your piping.
Yeah.
All that, you're just talking, yeah.
If you put solar, you would be essentially benefiting twice from that same surface area.
Well, that's why we talked about solars.
Yeah, that was a big.
What else we didn't use it for?
Solar.
We're not putting homes out there.
Yeah, that's, everyone else is doing solar on top. So the Maryland project we have, that's solar on top. And we pull the, we pull the gas from the.
We, we got to check into that.
Yeah.
To me, that's a logical step.
I don't know if we're the ones to do solar. You have fantastic companies in Utah.
I just want to make sure they're working with you guys so they.
Yeah, yeah, but it would, it would not interfere with us in any.
It's a high piece of ground with no trees, sun exposure from every angle. Can't build on it, kind of a no-brainer.
That's how I see it.
The other great piece of PR is with the Olympics coming, because you got part of the Olympics and showing this, and sustainability is one of the big ticket items on the Olympics. And by showing the methane reduction and the solar, you know, that's a great sales for the Olympics as well.
Yeah, I don't disagree. So Todd, any issues and from your side?
Uh we start tomorrow.
When you'll get with.
Just gotta look at my calendar.
Well, we're gonna have to probably, uh Chris Crockett will probably just have to amend that, was it section seventeen?
That's my.
Yeah, I, seventeen was an arbitrary number.
Yeah.
Brandon and I, we knew that this was a, we knew that we would want to do revenue generation, so we left a clause that said, in the event, there'll be a
Yeah.
an amendment. So we'll work on that and share it. It'll be an exhibit. I'm assuming you said it would be.
Yeah, and before it appears on commission agenda, we'll probably do one more presentation election and what changes we'll take and the agreement.
Is there, sorry, I'm gonna, I'm kind of a tight one. I like to negotiate if I may, Mr.
Yeah.
But is there an escal, is there a possibility of an escalating or an escalation? So over a period of time, if this does better, I mean, that kind of invites worse, but if we do some other things and this turns out to be a really a hot thing, I'd like, I'd like to at least think about that. I, I, I kind of like deals where if you win, we could win a little more, you know what I mean?
That's why we did the twenty percent. That way, if, you know, twenty percent of ten is twenty, if we, if you get forty dollars of credit, which I've actually just heard last week, thrown a call with a, a big software firm up in Seattle. Um they're looking at forty-dollar type credits. We did a twenty percent, so whatever that price goes to, you get to win in that same.
We're cutting it to twenty percent. I think by twenty thirty, you'll see those carbon credits up above thirty bucks for sure.
Yeah.
If not.
Everybody agrees, it's going to be.
But he, yeah. So the more they make, the more we make, Carl. Is that something you're talking about?
That's exactly what I was talking about. You know, like my grandpa would tell me.
Yeah. Okay, Commissioner Bollos.
No, my question you already asked of Todd, so.
Yeah, okay, well, I, I don't see where we could lose on this deal. And again, the main benefit is what we are doing for the environment, for sustainability. Take that methane out of the, you know, atmosphere. Uh I think we have a lot of positive PR here, Jessica.
Positive PR.
Positive PR.
He went right where I was telling.
Yeah, this, this may help us with the monitoring as well, because we are still going out on a quarterly basis to be monitoring. Cause now with our.
We're gonna, we're gonna actually, you, you stop just a tiny vacuum on the whole hill, see your monitoring, it will go to zero.
That's.
So that'll save us some time as well, correct.
Well, money, it's outside consult, it's an outside firm that monitors lots of contracts, right?
Wow. This is looking better all the time.
Dollars, I don't.
The great thing too is how we integrate our APIs with, with Q Energy's APIs, you know, we can give you dash and we're logging, so you can actually log in and see year-to-date what's been done. Uh almost on a fifteen-minute, you'll be able to see the methane be destructed and carbon created, credits created. And then sale values just off of the dashboard, off of a phone app or computer, so.
Well, I'm glad to see you come through with that, because when, when we did our site visit, dude, our ribbon cutting, you know, you told me or somebody told me we're using ten percent of the methane.
Yeah. How do we get the rest of it? Like three percent of the methane, so.
Oh, three percent.
So it's even more.
Well, and understanding when it was brought to us, it was solely a beta test. Cause I think everybody was a little like, we'll see what happens.
Correct.
They could plug that in and we could pull and all of a sudden there's nothing left, because we had stacked methane in there.
Uh huh.
So once it ran and it, and the levels stayed very consistent, I think the excitement
Yeah.
rose.
Yeah, yeah, because we've been consistent now for about six to eight weeks.
So you guys are comfortable that we're not going to run out of methane there?
No, but I just want to couch everyone's expectation that if, if it turns out that we, we start pulling more and there's not, and there's the twenty thousand we had there is actually only five or ten and and we decide that we're all going home, then we'll take our, there's no risk to the county.
Okay, yeah.
There's no risk. And so it's, we're comfortable enough that we want to invest more hardware
Yeah.
to get more. And we think that it's their value there.
Yeah, and we think you guys are the experts. You've looked at that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, what a fantastic poster child this will be for you guys.
It will.
And for Weaver County.
And we love them.
And they're, and they're local.
So there's other, other landfills just here in Northern Utah, so, and all the way down to St. George, and they've reached out and we've essentially told all of them, until we're successful in our backyard, we're not.
You'll find that Weaver County's traditionally taking more crap than anybody else in the state.
Well, also, I, I do that mostly.
Yeah.
Get in trouble and you get.
That's Todd's department.
Fantastic, great.
Okay, you okay with that?
Great.
Okay?
Awesome.
Alright, appreciate you doing it.
Thank you.
We're very excited about it. Thanks, Tim.
Thanks to you, Crockett.
Get that contract for ya.
Oh, excellent.
So Brandon, what's our timeframe on turnaround on this year?
It depends, Isaac.
Yeah, probably two weeks of back and forth, I imagine. It is a real. It's about like last.
Oh, perfect. Great, thanks again.
By Thanksgiving. After you've had some turkey, we need a little bit.
I don't see how we can lose on this.
No bustness.
No, it's a great bill.
And I, but I really think we need to, the next step is to do the same thing with the solar panel.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Take advantage of that. And I think, who, who are we talking to on the solar side?
Um I'm reaching out to Teresa Foxley.
Teresa, that's it.
Her company, yeah. Yeah, we'll reach out to, they're the big dogs in the, in the, in, right now, and if they can't do it, we'll find someone smaller.
Yeah. No, I think that's great.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it didn't conflict with their technology.
Well, we've. I'm just a little disappointed we didn't give us a hat or something, you know, or.
Well, if you'd actually go and do their tours when I schedule them, then maybe we could.
I've been to everyone you've scheduled, thanks.
You didn't get your hat?
No, it's okay, I don't, not self-serving like that. Less than fifty non- meri. I know all those.
Yeah.
When Corlin comes in, his is going to be a drone policy, I think, but it's actually operation.
Yeah. Yeah.
Want to make a motion that you're going on a break?
Uh, I'll take over that. I'll ask for a motion. We go on a saunter?
Second.
Uh just, make the motion to go on a saunter, because I'm acting as the chair.
Are you making the motion or? I am, who will make the motion.
Oh, then I'll second that.
Alright, here we go. All right, we're back in session, it's the two o'clock discussion regarding Promontory CRA.
Just a really.
Stephanie Russell.
Really quick update, um, I, uh, Commissioner Harvey heard from the school district, and they asked us why Promontory wasn't on the last month board meeting agenda. Um, so I reached out to Promontory and asked if they would, if they were ready to go onto the agenda, and they said yes. So I've got them scheduled for the December fifth meeting, I just want, this is just an update to let you know that we're gonna go back before the school board.
Before the school board.
Mm-hmm, uh, school board is the final, every, everyone else is signed, all the inter locals are done.
I wanna go, I wanna sit there, and I don't wanna speak.
They would love to have you there.
I just wanna sit there and I wanna just look.
Perfect.
Look at the book.
Would you look at one particular board member?
Who do you need me to look at? You're not gonna speak, really?
We might need to do a quick amendment to the inter local, we're working on that. Um, just as it relates to the boundaries, cause they've had a couple parcel numbers that have changed, so we, we're gonna get with Stephanie and, uh, Ebert, and make sure that we're, we've got everything that's getting signed is correct, so.
It's very, it's a very technical change, doesn't, it doesn't change much as far as the terms go, tax incrementation.
Yeah.
Um, may I bring up one other thing that I just thought about, um, I realized that this, um.
We have fifteen minutes.
Oh, yeah. The CRA is kind of in a suspended state, I, I think we might say, because there may be other plans for that area. Um, it just depends on what happens with, what do you decide eventually, but in case the CRA does not move forward, let's say inland port comes in instead, becomes the authority. Um, our current inter locals provide for kind of an escape clause for everybody. Um, just in case, uh, we don't end up adopting a plan and budget and get, and moving things forward, we can assure the school district, the fire district, and the county can be assured that all those inter locals will just kind of,
Yeah.
Go away automatically.
Right.
So, um, it's, it's a good thing to move forward, get these in place, um, have those commitments ready to go in case the CRA becomes the financing option, instead of inland port authority.
Yeah, and as you know, w- we are moving forward with the LMSA project as well, which is tied to the Promontory project, so we wanna make sure we have a, a safety net, uh, for everything, so we can get those projects going too.
Point of clarification.
Yes.
Our public hearing is on De- December fifth, their meeting at the school district, I've written down December sixth, Wednesday.
It is Wednesday, my, yes.
Excuse me, I'd love to hear those two words.
My, I'm sorry, you're correct, you're correct.
Wow, I don't, those are two little words I don't hear at home, right?
Yes, it's the sixth, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm.
And I've got that, that five o'clock, right?
That is.
No, the executive board is work sessions at five.
Which we are attending.
That's the one we're going.
We're gonna attend both, so we'll attend the work session, and then I will present at the, at the actual board meeting. Um, but the work session, uh, Promontory will be there to answer questions, I'll be there to present, and then I'll present at the work, at the actual board meeting.
Oh, good. Okay.
Yeah, and then Brandon and I are still working on our, on our, our policy revision, it's coming along really nicely. So we're, we're at the part where we have our committee reviewing it right now, so we'll hopefully be bringing that to you guys, if not December, early, early January.
So it's coming along.
Yeah, yeah.
I like it.
We're excited about it.
We need some input from the other committee members on some, what kind of considerations we should put in deciding whether, we should have a CRA.
Yeah.
And their, their policy considerations, so we've got all the legal stuff in place, we just need to have.
So we'll be hearing that in December sometime?
Hopefully, and, um, what I'd like to have you guys, once we get it through the committee, have you guys take a really good look at it, and then anything you would like to add to it, we'll pop that in and do another revision, and then get it passed through early, early in January, so. Um, I just have to give Quinny a lot of props, he's really worked hard on this.
That's great.
He really has.
Good job.
He's worked really hard on, he's created a whole entire packet, um, we've been working together on this flow piece, and then he's taken that and created the policy piece off of the flow piece, so we have a pretty streamlined process in place for PIDs and CRAs right now.
That one's operation get Quinny paid, that's paper performance.
It is, it, it actually was one of his paper performance goals, and, and, and he's done a fantastic job, so I wanna give him some.
He might get, even get two percent, huh?
Gotta earn it.
He's stretching it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, don't get too optimistic here.
Yeah, so, um, and just as a little foreshadow, um, you'll have another PID coming before you pretty soon. We ran, uh, the Eden PID through the Economic Finance Committee last week, and they gave them recommendation to put in a petition, so they'll put their petition application in which we'll review, and then we'll make another recommendation whether or not we'll bring that to you guys for review. So that's probably gonna happen in December also.
Wow, okay, we're busy December.
It will be busy.
All right, Brandon, anything else?
I don't have any.
Okay, well, I wanted, I talked to a member we have at our park district, very pleased with the efforts you've put for us for the park district. So, very happy, so.
Glad to hear.
You might take that into consideration for paper performance. It might offset some of the negative, I'm just. I think you call that mitigating.
Seriousness, he's one of the most capable attorneys, he's a lovable goof, he's just the best. I just, I, I could not do this job without him.
That goof acronym is what again?
Something good, I'm sure.
And, and, and same thing with LMSA, um, Quinny's been instrumental in helping us get LMSA back on track and our projects up and moving.
He's got some hard ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steph, keep us posted.
All right.
Did you get, uh?
Yeah.
Mister Daylight himself?
I text him.
Mister Daylight?
It's better to do carrier pigeon accordingly.
Where's Mister Daylight?
Oh, we just, you know, just right, he lights up the room every time. What'd you call him, the ambassador of what?
The ambassador of enthusiasm.
Enthusiasm, that's it, I like ambassador of daylight. All right, Cortland, welcome.
Thank you, how are you?
It looks like you got some excited, are you sure we can get this done in fifteen minutes?
Got a lot to say about.
A hell of a syllables and all those words.
Your own policy, you know, that's, all right, we're here now with the famous Cortland Erickson to talk about drone policy. Cortland and Chris Crockett actually are both agended up on this.
He's Batman today.
Okay, Batman.
Uh, earlier this year, the topic, um, of drone use came up, because one of the divisions, the engineering division, expressed an interest in having a drone to go out and look at floodwaters. And so through a lot of different discussions, um, I guess they pursued that on a policy approval level, um, as far as whether or not that would be a good idea, um, but separately, our office, um, we were tasked with, uh, looking into a countywide policy that would govern the use of drones, because there are various issues, a lot of people think of them as just a fun toy to use, but the FAA actually does regulate them. I called them the FCC earlier today, but, uh, the FAA, um, regulates drones, there are some liability issues. Um, you know, if they're flying over people or houses or something, and it falls down and damages or injures something or someone. Um, so we just wanted to make sure that we had something in place, and the sheriff's office already has a policy, adopted, and they've got people who are trained, certified, everything, and so one of our prosecutors, worked with me, we, we, we started with the sheriff's office policy, and we tried to modify it to be a little bit more general, um, to basically put a framework in place for what a county department or division would need to do if they want to, um, use a drone and own and operate a drone. GIS already has one, we spoke with Derek and James this morning about it, and got, got a sense for what they do. They have flown some missions for the surveyors.
Yeah.
They've also, um, done some stuff for engineering, and they said once, they even took it out to the fairgrounds for the people over there and flew, um, to do some video there, um. So our thought was by putting this general policy in place, uh, we, could ensure that it's done in a way that minimizes liability and ensures compliance with FAA regulations. So that's it in a nutshell, we did have just a couple of specific questions, and then, um, any input, feedback. One of the things that we, um, considered this morning is, there should be a program coordinator, somebody who oversees the program, is licensed under part one oh seven of the FAA regulations, and make sure that the program is operating correctly, and that anybody else who's operating a drone, um, or any department that's operating it, follows FAA regulations and complies with everything. And Chris brought up this morning the idea of having the GIS people do that as the county program coordinator for everyone except the sheriff's office, James and Derek are already licensed drone pilots under part one oh seven. And.
Quinn's an operator, I didn't know you were a pilot.
I'm not licensed. I do fly a drone, but.
Yeah.
I'm not legal.
So, so we were.
You didn't inhale.
So we were just mentioning how James and Derek are licensed, and Chris had brought up the idea this morning, and then I think he ran it by you, um, of having your office be in charge of the drone prog, program in the sense of having somebody be the program coordinator, and then you maybe even have their office be the approval authority if another department or division wants to establish a drone program. But that's, that's a question for you, you want that to go through their elected official or all the way to the county commission to establish a drone program?
Like, I think when we presented it with GIS and budget like a couple of years back, one of the selling points was they could fly for the surveyors or whoever, and then somewhere along the line, I, I think it's the surveyor's office went and got their own and have licensed pilots, so, I think what this does is at least brings that together where if somebody really does want a drone, they have to justify that through you guys, at the end of the day, to say, we've already got a resource, we've got, and I understand the sheriff's office doing their own, because that's very, uh, specific to their need, but.
It's also very time specific.
Yeah.
It can be, yeah.
And they're totally different drones than what these guys are flying, but I think it does kind of bring it together to where we're not wasting money. If, and, and have some type of, you know, they came to me, well, do you think we need insurance, and I'm like, yeah, if you're flying over, people or cars, so we need to have a standard to say, you know, if it happens, this is the way it works, and then, you have to be licensed, and you have to have insurance, cause we, we lost a drone, they, they were flying along the river, and I mean, didn't lose it, but it just dropped out of the sky and bounced on the ground and destroyed it, and we had insurance on the drone to replace it. But, uh, you know, if that happens while you're flying over somebody's house and.
And we wouldn't be opposed to having, you know, if the department wanted to get someone who was licensed, but have them work through GIS, just to make sure that all of the protocols, the FAA regulations are adhered to, because, we're, you know, we're in several different airspaces, we've got Ogden Airport airspace, we've got Salt Lake International, we've got, Hill Air Force, uh, uh, Base airspace, which is all, uh, regulates and go, uh, interacts with drone usage, so we have to be really careful. And they were explaining that they have apps that they use that are, uh, work with the FAA to file flight plans, you can't even take the drone off until you've been approved, uh, to go into certain airspaces, so it's pretty complicated. Um, so we just wanted to make sure we had one central, uh, organization, group of people that it all runs through, so we can make sure that everyone's adhering to doing what they're supposed to be doing.
I think that's a great idea.
I want, this is probably appropriate time and maybe not, but whatever language you're about to present, I wanna get, for me, I wanna get our inspectors off the roofs to do a roof inspection. All they do is go up and check on how many times that's been nailed up on the roof, and that puts us, and them at a high risk, uh, when they climb up there, so, sometimes those ladders, they have to borrow a ladder, because they gotta go up thirty, twenty-five, thirty feet in the air to climb up on a roof, and some of those roofs are like this, and I'm, I, I would, I wanna get the liability off, additional liability off the county and keep those guys. I'm, I I would, I want to get the liability off, additional liability off the county and keep those guys, that guy could take a drone. Go to the house, zip it, zip it, fly the roof line really quick and do a nail inspection or a staple inspection on that roof. Be done. Or or we, yeah, or we or we give that, we or we don't do them anymore, cause that's, that's really impeding. The inspection process or building process as it is now and put that back on the engineer or something on the builders. Cause it's, it's dangerous, remember, we had that one guy that was a certified engineer and he says, but I won't go up on a roof. And so our building department wouldn't hire it, cause that's, stands really by the book. More so, I mean amongst the the chatter of our, the builders out there, when you go to a city, the county's pretty tough. Versus some of the other cities and what some of it is because of roof inspections.
See, something like that, they could have it super inexpensive.
Yeah, a little D G I.
I did that when I was having my roof replaced, I got up there and saw one of the attic, it was a fan they didn't replace.
Oh, it's a good idea.
I'm like, text the guy, didn't even have to get on my roof.
Yeah.
Super smart.
No, yeah, we don't want you on your roof, we're on your.
No, four wheeler, no.
Four wheeler too.
I fly around and tell my wife, shovel this one over there.
Never would have thought that that was a possibility, but it told, makes sense to do something like that.
Well, I think it makes, we're just talking about creating a policy, they've got one center for approvals for oversight, making sure we're in compliance with the F F A. F A.
And I think there are some standards on it, two twenty-two, brands of, brands of drone and stuff like that, there are some standards that.
Yeah.
Um, I think government wise, they.
We probably, probably a lot of uses we aren't using them for right now that we could.
Mosquito abatement, they operate a really sophisticated system.
Oh, do they?
That's how they do their spraying.
Super cool. I, I was golfing up at this potato field in Grace, Idaho. And this guy comes, sets up his lawn chair, these drones go up and they were programmed. So he's just hanging out, watching them fly and wanna come back and land, he'd throw me batteries that'd go up and so I went over, I'm like, what are you doing to me? He said, this program will map growth and dryness and look for bug infestations. He said, it'll go do it all automatically and then it will tell me in this zone, you need to spray. Insecticide in this zone, you need to water a little more in this zone, you need, this is it, it automates my whole system, I don't have to.
Geez.
I'm like unreal.
Yeah, it's really, it's awesome.
The amount of money they save in having to hire, have a plane go out, which is ineffective at all. Um it's so much more efficient to use a drone.
And the the software behind it to map out a plan.
Yeah, it's the data you get off of that.
He wasn't sitting there looking at, he didn't even care, it was all gonna be taken care of. It was just all automated and then they'd come back and land next to him and I'm like, hmm, that is insane.
And then it records where it flies exactly and so they can tell what the difference was from the last time they flew. You know, exactly historical.
Super cool.
Yeah, but I just don't want to limit, I don't want any policy limiting us what we can do in the future.
Yeah, I mean, this is designed pretty general.
Yeah.
And it's just, it puts a framework around you and so if departments want to make the request, I mean. Do you want it to come to you directly, do you want it to go through, if you, if you do decide that I T should be the. The program coordinator, maybe the director of I T should be the program coordinator or actually the, I think the program coordinator has to be certified, but. Someone that.
Somebody in.
Someone that Quinn designated.
I s- I still think. Like it would should be run past you guys if somebody's wanting to buy a seven thousand dollar drone or a ten thousand dollar.
They would have come to us in their budget, we're gonna give, I would think we'd give you the same support we give to like Emily and say, wait, do you run that by? You run that by H R, you run that by Scott Part, we run that by Quinn, that's easy. Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we'll hear the request for the drone itself.
But that's.
For the equipment, but then after, you know, we approve the equipment, then.
The framework's super.
You need to go see Quinn or his guy and make sure your, all the policies are being lived up to.
That works.
Yes. That's how I see it.
So if you're okay with that, Chris, were there any other questions that we have?
Oh, we have retention requirement questions, but that wouldn't be part of this policy, we just want to know how long we needed to keep the reports and then. And the images for.
Random cleaning questions, so.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Quinn?
Yeah, okay, for sure.
That all you need me for?
Yeah, thanks.
I think so. Keep care of those drones.
I'll be flying night. It's actually illegal.
We'll get the draft to you.
Okay.
And uh do another quick fifteen minute work session, just to get your approval.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Portland.
You're welcome.
If we've got that other group out there, if you'll send them in, Portland.
Are you ready?
Hello.
There he is.
Brad Brown.
What are you working us over now, Brad? Holy mackerel.
Actually, we're, what are I? We're doing something that helps, helps you guys, we're getting that sixteen hundred south through. For uh through the, the uh school district piece there, so.
You're doing what?
We're, we're bringing that road through.
Okay.
So. Are we ready to start?
Well, we're waiting for uh maybe Steve Burton and Grover and Charlie.
You want me to run and see if I get him?
Yeah. Yeah, we've got quite a group looking at this.
We're a little early, aren't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, you got ten minutes, so.
What else you thinking, Brad? That's all I'm singing about right now. But everything's going overall.
Oh, we're bent.
Brutal, these relifers, they just beat the living.
Being developers.
These developers, you know. Well, there's Charlie.
First off, for a loop in your head of schedule. Okay, Mike?
No.
Sorry, if you wanna, you wanna hold it for your back.
I'm actually, Jake was gonna be here, but he uh got sick this morning, comes.
We're gonna wanna see maps, Charlie, at least by him. Charlie, you're aware of what's the request is here?
I am, and Steve will be up shortly, he's just, he's providing exceptional customer service on the phone right now.
We like that. Okay, well, if you're ready to present, go ahead.
Okay, I pulled some maps here.
You're ahead of schedule. Of course, I'm mostly, yeah, we've been making good times.
So, sorry, I'm gonna do it on the small screen here. Um, and some acres is this par- parcel right here. They've already received an approval, um development agreement that goes with it. The uh approval for the concept plan went with the R E fifteen zone. That R E fifteen zone is residential state fifteen and um the only reason why we used R E fifteen instead of the R one fifteen, which is the new residential zone. Intended for out west, it's cause we didn't have the R one fifteen adopted yet, in fact, we used a lot of the um negotiations and standards. From the um the development agreement on Ansemi Acres to help inform the creation of that song. Um, the applicant has purchased a piece, is it shown, have you actually? Okay, no worries, sorry guys, so.
Is it, hasn't been purchased yet?
Hasn't been. So it has purchased a, a piece on the school property next door that roughly lines up with um that corner here and kind of angles down just a little bit. Um to about that corner down there, um attention, oh, perfect. That helps. So if you see the way they line up, you got uh. Sorry, it did, I actually want you to log in again. There we go. So basically just taking that sixteen hundred south street that runs through Ansemi Acres, kind of curves it down a little bit to the south and. Um intersects with forty-three hundred west, um and then they get a few lots out of that, what, you know, four or five lots?
Uh eight lots.
Eight lots out of that, um basically they're requesting to rezone uh those, that little parcel. Uh or portion of it to the R E fifteen or R one fifteen zone, um similar to what their other development looks like. One of the things we wanted to try and tackle and so far I think you guys are okay with it is um rezoning the rest of Ansemi Acres as well to the R one fifteen. Just so we've got everything out there under the same zone, we don't have any standalone R E fifteens.
So we're still talking fifteen thousand square foot lots?
Yeah, so nothing changes in the um original Ansemi Acres, it's just uh it uh the same rules are extended to that little boot. Oh, thank you, Steve or whoever, on the screen now. I told Steve to do it. I'll turn the time over to Steve, this is his project.
Where does the road go? I don't see the road in there.
Um so.
Well, okay.
You can see the uh the addition, so uh we're just looking at the existing development agreement and there's a lot of stuff in the development agreement now that isn't needed. We wrote it the way we did because we didn't have the zone that we needed to have to make this work. So we're just suggesting uh essentially rezoning the original piece to the R one fifteen and allowing that zone to do its job.
And just adding those additional eight lots.
That's right.
So it's sixteen, but it's sixteen hundred. South coming through on the north, that's just proposed.
Fourteen hundred on the north, you mean?
The sixteen hundred.
Um.
On this, it's on the south.
Oh, that's future connection, so that's future to the southeast quarter.
Wait, which one are you talking about?
Are you talking about on the right hand side?
On the right hand side, yeah.
Oh, sorry, on the, the east side, uh yeah, so that's a future connection, yep. We, we don't have that secured from that landowner just yet, I understand that landowner might be in negotiations at this time, but.
They, and I, I can tell you that because we are working with them on, um you know, working on joint infrastructure financing projects, so. We, and from the beginning, Charlie said, you told us that that sixteen hundred south is important for us.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we, we programmed that in, but we knew also that the, the school district, you know, they were not being cooperative. And and weren't, but when we approached them and they said, we actually, we don't need all this land, we could give up a little bit if you want to buy it from us. We're trying to just get an easement to get some utilities out there. And they said, well, we don't quite need this, so you wanna buy it, we'll sell it to you, so. Um so that, I I think secures our destiny as far as the sixteen hundred south, which is a win for everybody.
Will you put in, Brad, will you put in a uh that, that little piece above those lots that face. South and a little bit east there on that corner, there, do you, will you buy to that red line that's indicated?
That red line looks like it's a. I don't know what that red line is actually.
What's your red line?
Spin red line.
Uh I think this is uh, yeah, you put that on there wrong or maybe it was something on the concept, but uh Brad owns all the way around over here. And the road is gonna go all in.
I, I don't, I don't own the square piece, I own just what follows that.
Also, the school keeps that other piece?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I can put this on there to show kind of the general.
Okay. And what connectivity do we have to the east?
To, to the east?
To the east side.
Um, that's where it goes into the martini property and they're, they're currently working on a plan right now. Not that if anything's been submitted yet or.
We're aware that they're working on something, but.
They are, so you, you don't have any.
You know, but if they do, if they do go with the R one fifteen zone, they'll work with us to make sure that sixteen hundred gets aligned where it is. Um Pat's project, Pat Burns' project over on um Stagecoach, he's already lined up roads to connect northward to the sixteen hundred. And so we'll see a pretty good street network out in that area. Um the other thing to talk about, we, we've discussed a couple of times with Brad, um uh improvements on fourteen hundred south. Uh the requirement for those improvements was because at the time it was sole access essentially to uh from fourteen hundred.
Right.
Where this is now providing a direct access to forty-three hundred, we wouldn't be expecting the um substandard street um improvements along fourteen. So that kind of solves that problem too.
So that will help on the fourteen hundred south issue.
That's right, okay, so we'll just work with the school district when they decide to put a school there to put some improvements in. And then uh the martinis or other families to the uh east to make sure fourteen hundred is expanded just as development comes in. Brad will take care of his frontage on fourteen hundred, but other than that, that we wouldn't be expecting, wouldn't we?
Okay.
You're just paying, probably doing, you're just kind of dropping back down at some point.
Yeah, that's about it, we're, we're that strong, that sixteen hundred.
Okay, what else?
We just uh, I just as a standard practice, wanted to put this on your radar. Because it went through planning commission, got positive recommendation, the development agreement changes should be fairly simple, so. I would anticipate the next month or so, bringing this together if you're gonna pay the things, just mean.
Great, so this has gone through planning commission, yeah.
Mm-hmm, unanimous, unanimous approval.
Okay.
And then, yeah, the, the development agreement is basically the same, just we cleaned up like Charlie said, the places where it says R E fifteen. With these, you know, ramifications to just as in, you know, as R one fifteen.
Yeah, do you think it's worth a debate in the discussion about payment of the two thousand dollars per lot? We talked about it with the planning commission a little bit, but I don't, do you wanna, should we talk about it here? Are you, are you comfortable with what they suggested, which was pay it before you record each plat for the number of lots?
Um, I, I was more comfortable with at, at the time of building permit, but um. That, I don't want to die on that hill, but it made sense to me to, to pay those, you know, at permit, but.
So yeah, the rezone, one of the development agreement says, uh we, you know, one of the smart principles of providing meaningful open space. Uh Brad agreed to pay two thousand dollars per lot. Um, we didn't actually specify when that's paid and so the planning commission was thinking, well, if it's paid at building permit, then you're passing that cost on to. The builder or homeowner to pay when you, the developer should actually be paying that, which is what we feel the staff as well. Um so our suggestion um to Brad and the planning commission was, let's make it clear in the development agreement that. That pavement should be made before each plat records. I don't know, uh thoughts on that?
Well, end of the day, costs get passed through the homeowner, like it or not, so. Yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate where you're going, but you know, the market will determine that. And if Brad can pass that on to the ultimate builder slash homeowner, he's gonna do it, so let's be honest.
Or the concern I had, concerns I had about um waiting till building permit is if that landowner isn't aware. That um that is a donation that was applied in order to get the rezone at the very beginning. They could come back as a potential impact fee as opposed to a donation for those landowner. And it's not, we don't have an impact fee plan or impact fee facilities, a plan that shows that, so I don't wanna, I've seen the ombudsman's office uh. Put people in their crosshairs for putting uh unlawful uh impact fees up together. And so that's, that's one of the reasons why we're more comfortable upfront, but um we're, yeah, we're open to anything.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's not an impact fee, so.
Right.
We know that.
And, and I mean by, you know, I mean, good business practices, standard business practice, we would let them know what their obligations are. Um I do realize that that doesn't always happen, but that we make our practice to, you know, not try and sneak anything in on anybody, but. And, and yeah, so we're fully aware of that and make, you know, everyone we're talking to full aware of that. It's just a matter of. Extra interest as we're.
Yeah.
Paying it earlier, so.
Costs are doing business.
I think another thing, another reason why we like the idea of having it paid before. Plat recording is because it's just, it's another box that we have to check, right, where are, we already have to make sure all the infrastructure is installed before we can. Issue a building.
This has another administrative check on top of that, it would just make it at least easier from, for an administrat- administration standpoint to do. Before the subdivision plan.
Sure.
So, I don't know, uh what, I guess I just ask that to know how you'd like it to be written into the development agreement before we bring it to you. If, if you're okay with it saying before plat records or.
Well, I think before plat records and as long as it doesn't address an impact shooting. Mr. Howard, you got a suggestion?
Well, I kind of, and it's the first time, I, I, I don't mind any of this, I, I do like the idea of it. About passing that fee on at the beginning, but you know, the developer's gonna pass that on to the, if they fail to go to the home. It's gonna all come out in the thing and if it makes, if it, if anyway makes it, I realize it's a little bit of a hardship, but if it makes it. Any easier so that it's more efficient for us, which means we can keep our costs down that way. that way, then that'd be good for that, because I want, I want to keep our costs as as our costs continue to rise for developers and builders. I want to do what we can to mitigate those, and if this is, realize it's a cost upfront. I was most surprised, but I thought you bankrolled these other cats. I thought you just kind of just went down.
Uh, maybe one day, Jim, but not today.
Not today, huh?
And really, you know, it's like, you know, there's forty five lots, two thousand lots and ninety thousand, you know, and construction, interest pricing, it's, you know, an extra uh, you know, nine thousand dollars a month for however long that takes, that whether whether we like it or not, that does factor into what ultimately gets passed on to the homeowner, so.
Kind of come into your cost.
So, uh, we we like to keep our costs up up front down. We don't like to pay banks anymore than we have to, but but we do what we've got to do, so, yeah, you tell us which way to go on that.
So, where does that money end up going?
Uh, it it, yep, it is uh before the plat records, we will need a letter from the Parks District that says that that payment was made.
Okay.
Okay, and there.
That donation was made.
Uh, the discussions we've had with Roger Heslop and with the Parks District.
Right.
You know, that park just to the south, they need money to complete that. I don't know what, you know, they've we've offered and stuff and help with engineering or, you know, to get that ball going, but it's not imminent as far as
Okay.
I'm, I've seen so far, so.
The one way or the other, the parks will be in control of that, those funds. Okay, that's one I want to.
Yeah. If there wasn't a building permit, would we just require each homeowner, home builder, come bring a letter in similar to what he would do if that's what they're for? Yeah, and that, that's a good thing to bring up because um it would lengthen the building permit process, right? Just another thing that has to be done before we can give you even the the land use permit, which um, I mean, builders would worry about that, not us being too long. Talking business days, but.
Yeah, well, I like it, just as one less thing that we need to track prior to, you know, after that class recorded, if we do it prior, just one less thing that comes off the list, so. I don't, and, you know, unless they had major objections with that. But again, I don't believe for a second that if, you know, the market allows them because of lot prices to pass that on to the lot price, it'll be passed on.
Yeah.
Like it or not.
Yeah, we're we're all getting pinched right now. You've probably seen it plenty.
Yeah, yeah, but it's a little different market than it was a year ago. I think we all understand that, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, Commissioner Bowles, anything else?
No, I I I agree with that.
You okay with that?
The staff, yeah.
Mr. Harvey? Keep doing business in Weber County, Brad. Thank you.
Well, keep doing it, so.
Keep doing it. Okay, it looks like you got to go. Does that answer your question, Steve?
And we're you know, as we don't like to let grass go under our feet, so we're trying to get before you as quick as we can.
So you're you're ready to go with this first year then, or?
Um, we, well, we don't have approvals yet, but, yeah, we're 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 trying to get going as quick.
Assume everything comes through, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. We're working on our financing right now.
Great. Thanks, Brad. Thank you for being late. Thanks, Brad, thanks for being with us.